I call this meeting to order. The date and hour having come, the warrant having been served and returned and a quorum being present, I hereby call the special town meeting of the Town and Shelburne to order. We will act on the warrant as printed and any other business that may lawfully come before this town meeting. Hello, I am Roland Jagair, Town Moderator, and this is Joe Judd, the Town Clerk. We have Andrew Baker, who is Andy, uh, and Lapierre, Lapierre, Richard Lapierre. Sorry. Uh, who are the Select Board members. Bob Manners is not here tonight, he's not able to join us, and we have Terry Narkowitz, who is the Town Administrator. Um, do you have any remarks to make tonight?
No.
Okay. All right. We have four articles in the warrant tonight. Please follow the articles on your warrant for a full version of each article. To expedite our proceedings, I will read an abbreviated version of each article. After an article has been introduced and a motion has been made and seconded, I will recognize the maker of the motion to speak first. I will then ask the Finance Committee if they have a recommendation on the article. To ask a question or make a comment, please proceed to the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. When recognized by the moderator, clearly state your name and your street address. Please organize your thoughts and limit discussion to the motion on the floor. Speak clearly into the microphone so that everyone will hear and be able to understand you. Please be prudent at the length of your comments so that we may adequately address our business in a timely manner to keep the meeting moving along. To make an amendment, please write it down and proceed to the microphone to be recognized by the moderator. Be prepared to submit the amendment to the Town Clerk if requested. I prefer to request votes by show of hands. Are there any objections to suspending the bylaw regarding voice votes in favor of a show of hand vote? I don't hear any objections, so tonight we will use show of hands to vote on the articles. Now, please take a moment to assure that all your electronic devices are silenced. So let us begin. Article one, we approve the our own lights option and direct the Energy Committee to undertake what they, what they have recommended for their final report to the Select Board dated August 1st, 2023. So since this article is a citizen's petition, I will ask for a petitioner if they will move the article.
So moved.
Okay. You need to identify yourself, please.
Owen Bragden. Should I come to the microphone?
To move the article, you don't need to, but you were, I think you have a statement after, I believe, correct?
Yes.
So, and state your address.
Owen Bragden, 40 Main Street.
Okay. Owen moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
And you're...
Patricia Stevenson.
Patricia Stevenson, seconds. Okay. Um, would you like to speak to the article?
Yes. Um, I asked that the article be passed over because the Select Board and Energy Committee agreed that it will be discussed at the annual town meeting after Real Term Energy has completed the industrial grade audit of our streetlight system and has made recommendations on how to proceed with their replacement in coordination with the Shelburne Streetlight Committee.
Okay. Are you moving that?
Yes, I'm moving to pass over.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a move and second to pass over this article. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion to pass over Article One, please raise your hands. Down hands, all opposed, to raise your hands. Motion is approved unanimously. Article two, to see if the town will vote to amend the Mohawk Trail Regional School District, uh, Regional District Agreement by striking and replacing certain language contained in Section Four, Appointment of Expenses Among Member Towns as further described in the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, so moved. Jason Cusomano, 37 Mechanic Street.
Mr. Cusomano moves. Do we have a second?
Second. Willow Coleman.
Willow, seconds. Willow Coleman. All right. Would Jason like to speak to the motion?
Yes, please. These are the same amendments that we, um, brought before, uh, the town at annual town meeting. At that point, um, they were fairly new, newly presented to Board Members and everybody and, um, Finance Committee in particular and Select Board felt they didn't have time to really digest them. It was defeated at annual town meeting, um, and it's back before everyone in the same, same language as was presented at annual town meeting. Now, much more time to digest. It was, uh, it did go to all eight towns in the regional, um, in, in our regional agreement for vote. Five of the towns did approve it, um, and, um, it was defeated by Shelburne Heath and it was passed over by Plainfield. At this point, Plainfield is, uh, meeting actually next week to discuss having a special town meeting about it. At the time, they were very open to addressing it again. They felt similarly, they didn't have time to, to process it well and wanted more time. Heath is, uh, mulling it over as well. They had a meeting last night and presented a lot of facts and they're going to be discussing it next week as to whether they will have the special town meeting. This vote to, to secure the five votes we already have, um, the remaining three towns, it does need to be unanimous, need to approve it before the end of the year, or else it will have to go back to, um, all towns again to get approved. So, um, back to the basic amendment, the next, the three articles that we're presenting are all related, you know, to the, the change in the regional agreement. So as we discuss them, there's going to be three votes that need to happen. But generally, the idea is that our regional agreement was written 40 or 50 years ago prior to school choice, to charter schools, to out-of-district special ed placements, um, and it's honestly out of date. It, um, you know, every town in Massachusetts is responsible for, you know, educating their students within their, within their boundaries, um, and the way we count kids currently, if a child falls in one of those categories or a few others, they're not counted as part of, in this case, Shelburne's responsibility. We all, I, I would hope the room would feel that we should be responsible for our kids. Um, you know, that is the intent. Most municipalities and most other regional school districts use what's called foundation enrollment to count kids, which would, uh, bring in those school choice kids, the special out-of-district special ed, um, and charter school and others, um, and it's, it's generally considered a very fair way to count the kids within each town. Um, so to some degree, we're trying to just get with the times and, and, um, this whole amendment is really a fairness thing, is, you know, Shelburne should pay their fair share for the kids we have, you know, Trailmont should do the same, Coal Rain, um, and right now, things can get skewed, especially in a small district, you know, a few kids one way or the other can, can definitely throw people's percentages off, you know, considerably and, um, and hurt smaller towns. So there's been some analysis, it's a really hard subject to dive into. Our business administrator provided some, some good, we'll call them projections based on today's data, you know, if enrollment stayed the same and everything stayed the same, what the effects would be, we presented that to Select Board and Finance Committee. Shelburne's impact, based on that analysis, would be very minimal. Um, you know, it, uh, it, it really is a fairness thing, some towns might have a slight hit one way, sometimes might go the other way, and then a few years later, it could change again. It's all about what kids live in your town and, and, you know, being responsible for them. Um, I, you know, we've, we've had a lot of meetings, um, I'm really, you know, happy with kind of the progress we've made with communication between Select Board and Finance Committee this year, you know, over the last few months, you know, I've been to a lot of Finance Committee meetings, they've had a member joining us often at Budget Subcommittee meetings. I really think we're making good progress on, you know, communication and, and being as transparent as possible. Um, I'll, I'll speak for them, I'm sure they'll speak as well. Um, I think generally, um, the Finance Committee and Select Board as well is in agreement with the gist of the amendment, you know, that this is a fair way, um, to count kids, this makes sense. Um, there has been some concern with specifically some of the language that was changed in the capital section on, on what is considered a capital request. So we've had, I'd say, four, four or so meetings, um, with a couple with Select Board, a couple with Finance Committee, um, discussing that. At this point, I, I, they'll speak as well, but you know, um, Finance Committee at this point is not recommending it because of, uh, the, the concerns with the capital. Um, and, and, uh, last night, Select Board is, is split on the decision with Bob out, kind of one against, one for. I think both committees feel that the, the enrollment and the counting of kids makes sense, um, and that capital issue is the, the sticking point right now. So what happened with the capital, the, the main issue with the capital, the whole section got reworked to be clearer, you know, um, it's about, I, I think I counted at one point, there's about, the whole amendment is about 17 pages, it's about eight that are being struck and eight-ish new ones coming in. Um, and so in the reworking to make it all clearer, the definition of capital in the, in the agreement went from the word, the sentence, there's really one sentence that, you know, people are opposed to. So it went from saying, um, the sentence was, a capital request is, can be various things, and the one sentence that, the one part of the sentence that's at issue is it used to say making extraordinary repairs, and that section was changed to maintaining, comma, or making substantial repairs. So there's an adjective different and the word maintaining is added. Um, there was no, it was a big, big back and forth between, um, School Committee writing it, going to lawyers, to DESI, this is where it landed, this language has been approved by DESI, you know, to move forward with, they'll have a final approval in the end if this was the past. But, um, that's the, that's the language that people are concerned with. Maintenance items shouldn't be considered capital requests, that's, that's a given, you know? So if you're changing the filter in, you know, the water for the ice maker, that's maintenance, that's not a, a capital request. Um, the, so that's the concern, going from extraordinary repairs to maintaining or making substantial repairs. So there's been back and forth about, you know, we should turn this down because we don't like that wording. I've spent hours and hours looking at 20 to 30 different towns, cities, schools, definitions of capital. We asked Terry for the Shelburne's definition of capital, which from Terry, Shelburne's Capital Management Plan definition, quote, "A capital expenditure is defined as a purchase or acquisition of goods or services involving an expenditure of 2,000 or more." That's a very vague definition. Most definitions have a dollar amount. In my research, it was anywhere from 2,000, is actually one of the lowest, is the lowest I found, to about 25,000 in a city like Cambridge or, um, and so there's usually a dollar amount involved and then a life expectancy on the thing that's happening, the good or service in Shelburne's definition. And those life expectancies go from as little as one year to generally five years. That's the language that the Mohawk Trail District doesn't have clearly. There's been, there's been an understanding that capital requests would be things to a building of over $5,000 has been kind of, uh, but that's not written anywhere, there's no definition of that. It's also, shouldn't be in our regional agreement because 10 years from now, $5,000 isn't going to equal what $5,000 does now. Um, so it's my recommendation that we move forward with the article as written, um, with an, an, I, I agree, a vague definition of capital and that we work hard on policy, procedure, job descriptions to nail down the real definition of capital. That, that's where the meat nuts and bolts of this happens, is this really needs to be written well in procedures and policies and, you know, our Facility Director, Robin, maybe in her job description, you know, because the bottom line is, they're rightly concerned that a maintenance type item based on this definition can go through as a capital request. The reality of that is, you've got, I'll use today's people, um, you've got Robin, who's our Facilities Director, who has to propose a capital request. She's going to run that by our Business Administrator and the Superintendent. So now you've got three people that are going to look at this and say, yes, this is worthy. Then it goes to our Building Subcommittee on a School Committee level. They would propose it, it would move on to Budget Subcommittee. They would agree with it, they would move it to a vote for Full School Committee, then it would become an amendment, go to the towns, Finance Committee, Select Board would have their chance to look at this, and in past experience have picked some out and said, no, this shouldn't be a capital request. Finance Committee, Select Board has a chance to, to weigh in on it, and then it goes to the voters to be voted on. So there are, in my count, about nine different safeguards as to why a maintenance item won't end up in a capital request. And then let alone, every year, we're audited and the state auditors come in and they're going to look at our books and, you know, if we've got stuff in there, then they're likely to pick it out. Now, there's plenty of opportunities for things to get rubber stamped or whatever, but you've got nine different levels of safeguards there. Chances are, that type of abuse is not likely to happen. And I, I would hate for this little wording thing to hang it up. We've got, you know, our other School Committee member, Willow, um, is on the Policy Subcommittee. She has, uh, you know, in her day-to-day job, a history of capital requests and in, you know, at a state level, um, at UMass, and she's ready to move forward with this and get that, those policies and procedures in place to really define this. I think we've got good momentum on this, um, and I would hate to see that hang it up. Um, so I would highly hope that you would, you know, do the right thing and move this forward so everybody's paying their fair share. Um, and I think, uh, that's all.
All right. Now I'm going to ask the Finance Committee if they have any recommendations on this article.
Hi, Jay Redinger, 203 Shelburne Center Road. The, um, this is a, a legal document, and while it's just a few words, um, any of you who have dealt with, uh, legal documents, you know, um, that they hang on just a few words. Um, if there are nine different safeguards, um, who are going to protect, uh, a town from being charged for, for maintenance rather than the school district being charged for capital, um, I'm wondering if those same nine safeguards weren't, weren't in place when this was reviewed by the, by the school district before it was presented to the towns. We've had a lot of months pass, um, since this was defeated by the town meeting, and it's just in the last month or so that we've begun to talk seriously about what kinds of things we could do to change this. I think that's, um, that's too bad. So while we are improving communication, we haven't improved it to the point where we've, uh, been able to come up with a different, a different plan for dealing with this. There are a lot of things that could happen, there are a lot of places, those nine places that Jason mentioned where we could stop it. That's not to say that it will get stopped there, um, or get caught there, just as these few words didn't get caught there. We agree with the fairness, um, aspect of this, but we simply don't agree with the language. And it's not that we don't like it, it's not a matter of liking it, it's not sound legal language, and that's what we're dependent upon. It's not at all clear, um, this, this contract has been enforced, or this agreement's been enforced for quite a while. It's likely going to be a long time before we do it again, and it's important that we get it right. What happens if we don't pass this? Not much. These, um, these kinds of, uh, the only analysis we could get was not a moving forward analysis, and we agreed that that would be a difficult thing and, um, and a speculative thing to do, but we looked at the past analysis, which uses a five-year rolling average. So adding one more year of the current process to a five-year rolling average is not going to really rattle the cage very, very heavily. So we have another year, or at this point, six or seven months before the next town meeting, to get this language right. We're very concerned that this is the one thing we picked up in it that is wrong, and you know that if you pick up a, a legal document and you find a glaring mistake in it, and we think this is a glaring mistake, not just a little, a few little words, but a glaring mistake, that there may be others. We asked for the changes that have been made between version one and the new version, and we can't get that, that doesn't exist. In fact, we're told, we don't know who made this change or why they made it. So we can't even ask, why was the change made? Don't know. Don't know, it was just changed. Towns are responsible for the capital renewal of their buildings, the district is responsible for the maintenance of them. By changing the responsibility from a maintenance cost to a capital cost, we've changed the responsibility. And so that could have a, a significant impact on a town. The method of counting children is fine, not a problem with that. We don't understand why other things needed to be changed in the document, and we're not able, nobody's able to tell us that. So we urge you to defeat this article, these articles, and look at them again in the spring at the regular town meeting. We'll live with one more year of a budget the way it's been for the past, when was the, whenever this agreement was made, but it's wrapped up in a five-year rolling average, that's not going to break the bank in any town. So we urge disapproval, the Finance Committee does not approve these articles. Thank you.
Is there, are there, is there any other discussion? Approach the mic, please.
Sorry, I don't have much time tonight because I got kids at home, but it's Jim Boomer, 14 Main Street, and, uh, I see so much, uh, Mohawk stuff tonight, and I heard what the Finance Committee said, and accountability is definitely what it's about at Mohawk. Um, I tried to work with the school to set up this outdoor, uh, committee to bring back the greenhouse ropes course and really some of the infrastructure stuff. So whatever's behind all of this in terms of finance is being used to fix buildings and courts and the grounds and do betterment that brings kids in, is really what I see as the bigger picture, what's going on for all this Mohawk stuff. So it's hard for me to follow it all, but I worked with the school, and what ended up happening is Principal Buckland, with all due respect, felt it was too much work at the time, I think, and because my, neither of my kids are at the Mohawk, because they were in Row and the Academy, I was told I could no longer be on the committee that we, I started with Aliyah Wolfington. Uh, so anyways, accountability is what I'm saying, sorry to be off topic, but, uh, hi, is that Cheryl? Hi Cheryl, we exchanged so many emails and nothing got done. Oh my goodness.
Excuse me.
Yeah. No, I, we set up a meeting with all those, the outdoor landscape architects and you didn't come. You didn't come.
Excuse me, can you, can you stick to speaking to the...
Yeah, that's it, I have to go, thank you very much, and the light bulbs, if you do it tonight, watch out for 5G and cameras, please, thank you.
Any other discussion on this motion? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Baker.
Yeah, Andrew Baker, 38 Mechanic Street, and, um, I'd like to, uh, speak to the objection of the Finance Committee around the, the, uh, change in, in language. I think the question we have before us tonight is, in looking at the language of extraordinary versus substantial, uh, can we detect a meaningful difference? And to, to try to get at that question, I asked the Finance Committee when we met previously, is there an example of when the voters were presented with, uh, a maintenance article in a capital request? And Jim Burnham gave me an answer and said that, what was it, a year or two ago, there was a, a vote that took place that the Finance Committee objected to the items that had been brought forward through these nine layers, and, um, and what I want to point out is that that, uh, request was made under the previous language, uh, of extraordinary expense. So there was an example of, even if we had gone back and changed this language back to what it used to be, we had an example of an expense coming before us that the Finance Committee objected to. Uh, as it turned out, the voters of Shelburne did not agree with the Finance Committee and voted to approve those, those, uh, capital requests. So what I draw as a conclusion from that is that after all that review, and no matter what language you have, whether it's extraordinary or substantial, you can have an honest disagreement about what a capital request is, and it's really up to us as voters to make that decision on town meeting floor, and that's what we did. So I'm, I'm speaking in favor of proceeding with this article, and even with the language change, because I don't believe that that's where the appropriate distinctions need to be made. As Jason mentioned, those distinctions need to be made by all nine of those layers and particularly by us at the voters at the very back end, and that's what we do at town meeting. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Mr. Burnham. James Burnham, 64, Little Mohawk Row. Uh, I'm a member of the Finance Committee. I have a list of six or seven items here, I hope I can meet it before light, but, uh, we'll see what we can do. A little history here. The current...
Speak into the mic closer, please.
Speak into the microphone, is that better? There it is, okay. Uh, the current District Agreement dates back to approximately early 1990s when the district was changed from a 7 through 12 district to a K through 12 district. To help simplify it for folks, I didn't bring the right copy with me, but what we're talking about here is on your first page of the warrant that you have to... about here is on your first page of the warrant that you have tonight, paragraph B. If you have a pencil or a highlighter, highlight paragraph B. That's the definition of capital costs in the current agreement, one currently in effect. Flip through your warrant, six pages. Each piece of paper is two pages. You get to page six, you'll find paragraph B, capital costs, again. Those are the paragraphs we're concerned with. You could compare them for yourselves, what has changed between those two paragraphs? A lot of it is the same, but there's a couple sentences in the middle that adds maintenance. Not extraordinary maintenance, not substantial maintenance, maintenance. Maintenance has always been a district responsibility, both to get it done and funding it through operating expenses, rather than capital. For the current definition of capital, I call it bricks and mortar definition. And that's why it was built that way. In the 1990s, you had, when you consolidated the districts, it kept Buckland and Shelburne responsible for the bricks and mortar costs associated with Buckland and Shelburne School. Colrain responsible for the bricks and mortar costs with Colrain School. Asheville and Plainfield responsible for the bricks and mortar costs of Sanderson. Talked about additions, major remodels, major remodels, and extraordinary repairs. No mention of maintenance. Now, when we revise the definition of capital to include maintenance, we're making a significant change here. The definition of capital was made the way it was, no dollar figure. It's not like the town business where towns consider something over $2,000 a capital expense. In school district terms, a capital expense is an addition to a school, major remodel, bricks and mortar type things for the school. The towns that own those schools, or the, it's like the town of Buckland and Shelburne responsible for those costs to Buckland and Shelburne School. Adding the paragraphs here now, another one of the sentences in there makes vehicles a capital cost. Capital costs are defined differently because the costs associated with them are apportioned differently. This is why you have, why there is a definition of capital costs in there. Capital costs associated with Buckland and Shelburne School are apportioned to Buckland and Shelburne. Okay, now in the definition of capital costs, we have vehicles. How are we going to apportion a vehicle to Buckland and Shelburne? How are we going to apportion it to Sanderson? All of a sudden, we've made a very vague and gray area here. If I could read my own writing, it'd go a little faster. Tonight, tonight we're going to be voting on these. I think it's important for everyone here to realize that a no vote tonight is not a vote against the schools. You're not voting against the schools if you vote no tonight. A no vote tonight secures the future of your town. It's, you're not voting against the schools. And in my opinion, and I think it's the opinion of the finance committee, there is no compelling reason to vote on this tonight, to pass this tonight. The change, we agree, the changes to how you count students makes sense, they're perfectly fair, everything else. However, the change to the definition of capital, we totally disagree with. This is, after the vote tonight, this is a binding document on the town. You're binding your town to that language. We feel that that is unacceptable. There's no real reason to vote on it tonight, put it off until next annual town meeting in May. There's been a lot of work put into it so far. You're going to have the same boards, the same elected officials next spring that you've already convinced this, of this article. Just put it off till next May, correct the language to where it is satisfactory, and bring it up and forced to vote on that. Without that, without that change of capital in there, we find it's good to be supporting the article. Thank you.
Are there any, is there any other discussion tonight? Yes, Mr. Kingsley?
Robert Kingsley, 59 Patton Road. I am a little confused, we're going to vote on something that they're going to change the language on later on, on a legal document, or some verbiage. You're not changing verbiage.
Excuse me, um, if you vote on, if this passes tonight, our town, plus the other eight towns vote this and pass it, then it becomes that language.
Well, what are we changing? Something's going to be changed after this meeting, to make it more understandable. If you're changing a document that the town has voted on, it's got to go back to everybody to vote on the new agreement. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak to this motion? Yes.
Christian Witsett, 55 Main Street. Just a clarification from the select board, do the town voters have to approve, sorry, do the town voters have to approve district operating costs?
Is that to the select board, or to...
Sure.
I'll take Cheryl's, Cheryl's answer there.
Does the town have to vote for approving capital costs? Yes. So then why is this an issue? Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Deborah Andrew, 165A...thank you, thank you. Deborah Andrew, 165A Reynolds Road. I think, to simplify this, if we approve and vote yes on this article, this document becomes a legal document, and it is binding until a new document is presented and voted on, and approved. So if you vote yes, you are voting to approve the document as read, regardless of any other implications that have been stated tonight.
Anybody else want to speak to the article, or not to the motion? Yes.
As was stated before, the select board is split. I do not support this, I do not support this article, or these articles, for the simple reasons stated by the representative of the finance committee tonight. I think anyone in town can appreciate the due diligence, the effort, the intelligent approach taken by the school committee representatives that we have voted for our town, and for our finance committee as well. We've spent countless hours hearing both sides of this issue, and all things, when it comes down, I agree, how can it hurt to go another six months and look at a different version of this, after so many decades of the existing agreement? That's all.
Anyone else? Please approach the microphone.
Dana Cusmano, 37 Mechanic Street. I guess I would ask the school committee to explain, there's two different things that are involved, and why would it not be good to vote tonight? And I'm really confused about, I mean, I think I agree with Christian, where we, if it's nine layers of voting, and you're all going to get to vote on what happens, if there's anything questionable in there, and you're going to get to vote on it, I don't understand why, there's plenty of stopgaps, there's lots of safety nets, and, you know, I just think there's other, are there other things that are important to the school district in this situation?
Is...
Invite them to speak.
Yes, you can invite them to speak, and I can allow it, if there's no objection. I don't hear an objection, so...
I'm Martha Thurber, I'm the chair of the school committee. What's in it for the school committee is indeed the fact that we would have a different methodology for calculating enrollment, that captures all of the students of the town of Shelburne, regardless of where they go to school. Because right now, all of the towns share in the costs of choice, charter, and extraordinary special education expenses. All of those expenses are in our operating budget, and all of those expenses are then shared by all of the towns, even though, and those students appear in no one's enrollment, right? They're just, they're just, it's an expense of the district. So those students should be allocated, we're not asking the town of Shelburne to pay for those students, we're asking them to include those students in their enrollment, so that it could be fairly distributed among all of the towns in the district. That's what's in it for the district. Why do this tonight? Because five towns have already approved it. If Shelburne votes it down, we go back to all of the towns, but at the same time, we come back to Shelburne in the, in the spring, we need to go back to all of the towns who have already approved it. Now, there are, there are two other towns who haven't approved it. One of them is deciding whether to have a special town meeting, and one of them has expressed an interest in having a special town meeting, and we're meeting with them next week. So it's not a done deal, there are other towns to vote, but if you vote it down tonight, then all of the other towns will have to vote again, for sure.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the motion? Yes.
Owen Bragden, 40 Main Street. So I'm trying to figure this out as well, and I'm, I'm curious as to the response, you know, from people who oppose this, to, I think it was Christian Witsett's question about what, why does it matter if we're, if we have to vote on each thing anyway? So I'm interested in hearing the response to that, and then I also, I also do feel like it, it doesn't, doesn't seem to me like it would be that big of a deal to have everybody vote on it again, considering that, you know, if they already voted on it one time, our, like, isn't it okay to have them, you know, to correct the language? And seems like that shouldn't be a problem. But I, you know, I'm interested in, you know, hearing more on both of those things.
Thank you. First is, are you addressing that particular? Okay, you stick to the, stick to Mr. Bragden's remarks.
James Burnham, again, 64 Little Mohawk Road. The answer to the question about, what's the difference? The difference is, capital costs are apportioned differently than operating costs, sir. Operating costs are apportioned in accordance with one formula, capital costs are apportioned by the town. That's, that's why there's a difference between, why we're concerned about the definition of capital. Capital costs are apportioned differently than the operating costs, sir. Does that answer your question?
I, I still don't really understand.
You need to read the agreement, it's in the agreement, apportionment of cost.
Yes, you may speak.
Mary Lou Gallop, 203 Shelburne Center Road. If there is this theoretical voting on capital costs that we need to do as part of our town meeting approval of the budget, if we have questions about maintenance versus capital in that budget, every year, there comes an issue, we will end up voting and reapportioning every year, because questions will be brought up when capital is a problem, maintenance is thrown in as capital. We'll have muddled school budgets, we'll have more explaining to do. So I would rather see it straightened out now, this year, by holding off until the spring, getting the language right. We still don't know why, I've never heard why the language was changed, and I think we need to get it right, because it is a legal agreement, and I think in the long run, it will save us time, approving those budgets in each of the towns. If we have to go, if every town has to look at maintenance versus capital, if there are questions that come up, that's going to be a reoccurring problem.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the, to the motion? Here... Can everyone hear him okay? Please approach the mic. Thank you.
So I am more confused than when I came in, which is normal for the course. So from your perspective, we're dealing with an amendment to our agreement with the Mohawks, correct? I keep hearing about negotiations of the cost, or capital cost definition. Is in fact, there going to be a discussion about adapting that, or is this basically the document that we're going to be living with? And in the future, school committee negotiating with the Mohawk Trail Regional School District can adopt new bylaws, if I'm correct? So could somebody please clarify, is there actually a negotiation going on about the capital costs, and whether or not that's going to be brought forward in the spring if we reject this tonight? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cusmano, you can speak directly to that question?
There is no negotiation on how to address capital. The wording went from extraordinary repairs to maintaining and substantial repairs, that's the, that's the whole gist of the conversation right now. The, like I said before, the way you solve it is in good, clear definitions in a policy and procedure. Just like Shelburne's definition is extremely vague, it doesn't even, you know, it says goods or services. So you have the sewer rounded, you know, that, or anything changed, and it's over $2,000, it could be capital based on Shelburne's. I hope there's other bylaws that maybe narrow that down. We have the ability at, you know, at a school level to write policies that clearly define this, and that's where this needs to happen. Why... Why not wait six months? Because things change all the time. I mean, Jim's been on the committee for three weeks now. It's his second go-round. But there's going to be all new finance committees in May. You know, there's a good chance 10 different members change. And now, they haven't been through this experience and had this explained to them. It's not as simple as if a town voted yes before, they're going to do it again. In a small town like Heath or Holly, you know, they may get 30 or 40 people that show up to a town meeting. They're not going to get the same 30 or 40 people necessarily. So it's not a slam dunk, oh, you change a couple words and all five are going to say yes again, and now Shelburne are saying yes. It's a totally new animal. The bottom line is, on a school level, it doesn't matter if you vote this in. This is all about you guys. This isn't about the school. This doesn't let the school do anything differently. We still go by the same rules and guidelines. We're hoping to even tighten those up. You know, the school isn't...
Can you just stick to responding to his comments?
I... I guess that's more Owen's question as to... But I can end it there if you...
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Kingsley?
Maria Kingsley, Patton Road. I think my concern, question is, the school committee is asking us to pass a binding legal contract with wording that doesn't matter because we have checkpoints. I've been through several things with lawyers with contracts and there's no saying, well, we can just fix that. It's binding. It seems like through the finance committee, it's monetarily binding to the town of Shelburne for a long time. So I don't like being asked to pass a legal document where the wording has been changed and that we're using the excuse, well, we'll just be able to fix it here, there, whatever. That's not how you do it. I don't like being asked to do that.
Anybody else want to speak to this article, to this motion? Seeing none, then we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Okay, the motion is to approve Article II. Am I correct?
Yes.
Alright, that's what I thought. Okay, so we'll proceed to vote on the article. All in favor of the motion to approve Article II, please raise your hands. Downhands, all opposed, raise your hands. I am in doubt. So I could use the count.
We don't have counters tonight, but I can...
Okay.
...count. So if you just raise your hands again, all those...
All those in favor, please raise your hands and keep your hands up so that the town clerk can count you. Alright, now, downhands, all opposed, raise your hands.
Town clerk is in doubt, I would like to do that count again.
Alright, can we have everyone that is in favor of the motion to stand, please? In favor of the motion. Thank you. All opposed, please stand. Alright, thank you. Okay. Our town moderator would like to count again because it's such a close vote. So, one more time, please be patient with us. All in favor of the motion, please stand. And the town moderator will count you. And as he counts you, you could then be seated so that he knows how many are left to count. He's going down the stairs.
Can't find my way down right over here.
I thought he was taking off.
This is probably how women do this. Usually I can't even think of anything to do. So, one more time, please everybody that's sitting there, screen down.
Oh, all... Okay, again, all that approve. All that are voting yes, please stand again.
Four.
Sit down as you count.
Eight.
Nine.
Eleven.
Twelve.
Thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
Seven.
Eighteen.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
Okay.
Okay. Now, all opposed to the motion, please stand. And we'll do the same counting down.
Ready? One. Two. Three.
Four. Five. Six. Seven.
Eight. Nine. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Seventeen. Eighteen.
Nineteen.
Twenty. Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-four. Okay.
Did you count yourself, Joe?
Yes, I was the one.
Did?
We're ready to play that one. I like the idea of the counters, let me do the counting after five times.
I just want to make sure I got the same numbers he had. Okay, there were 26 yeses and 24 nos, so the motion has passed, so it's approved. So, we move on to... Thank you very much, Joe.
I should have had my counters here tonight, I guess.
Get ready, there's two more articles. Alright, Article III. To see if the town will vote to amend the Mohawk Trail Regional School District Regional District Agreement by striking and replacing certain language contained in Section 6 Budget as further described in the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Cusmano moves.
Second, Willow Cohen.
Willow.
Cohen.
Cohen. Has seconded. Alright, would Mr. Cusmano like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, basically, these three amendments are lumped together. There's three different steps to it. This article is... Would... Simply would apply foundation enrollment to the way we count tuition for those students who tuition into our schools. And Row is the main example of that. So, same idea for people that tuition in versus live in the district.
Okay. Does the finance committee have any recommendations on this article?
The same as the last, we don't recommend this one.
Okay.
We... We... The school committee, the school articles, we don't recommend either one of those moving forward. All three.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Baker.
My understanding was that the finance committee's objection was to the maintaining language in the article we just voted on. What is your objection to this article?
You may answer.
Jay Riddinger, 203 Shelburne Center Road. Finance committee chose not to act on this article?
Oh, so you're not a...
So...
I don't believe we have to give a reason for that.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the motion?
Owen Bragden, 40 Main Street. I'm just wondering what would happen if, since we passed the other one, and if all the towns pass that one, but we don't pass this one, what would happen?
Does the... One of the school representatives be able to answer that question for us, please?
Martha Thurber's chair of the school committee. This amendment... Sorry. This... If you voted down this amendment, then this amendment would not pass. And we would revert to the language that is in the agreement now. It would not change. This... All this amendment does is it applies the same foundation enrollment rationale to our calculation. The way we calculate tuition for the town of Row is to take an aggregate of our town's operating assessments and per pupil. And then they... The average of that, they pay that as tuition to Mohawk Trail. So this simply says that that same methodology, that we've now changed how we're doing our operating assessment, that same methodology will now apply to how we do the Row, calculate the Row tuition. That's what this does. So if you said no, then we would have to go back, recalculate for the Row tuition using the old methodology. That would be the impact.
Alright. And is there anyone else that would like to speak to the motion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Downhands, all opposed, raise your hands. Alright, I'm in doubt. And so we will proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please stand and be counted as our town clerk.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six. Seven. Eight.
Nine.
Ten. Eleven. Twelve.
Thirteen. Fourteen. Seventeen.
Eighteen. Twenty.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Okay, twenty-seven. Okay, very good.
Okay, all opposed, please stand to be counted.
One. Three. Four.
Five.
Six. Seven. Eight.
Nine. Twelve.
Thirteen.
Four. Fifteen. Fifteen. Eighteen. Nineteen.
Twenty.
Okay, the yeses were 27, the nos were 20, so this article is approved. Article IV. To see if the town will vote to amend the Mohawk Trail Regional School District Regional District Agreement by striking and replacing certain language contained in Section 15 Effective Date as further described in the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, so moved.
Mr. Cusmano moves.
I second, Willow Cohen.
Ms. Cohen seconds. Would Mr. Cusmano like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, this article is merely changing the effective date based on these regional agreement amendments.
Alright. Does the finance committee have any recommendation on this article?
No.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the article, please raise... Of the motion, excuse me, please raise your hands. Downhands, all opposed, raise your hands. Motion is approved. Okay. Having come to the end of the warrant, I entertain a motion to dissolve this special meeting of the town of Shelburne. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please raise your hands. Downhands, all opposed, motion is approved. Thank you very much for attending and for participating in this.